And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it appears that we have all six councilors in attendance. Thank you. Um, since this is an all Zoom meeting, we will be doing roll call votes. Item number four, public engagement. Madam Secretary, do we have any public engagement?
Madam Chair, we have no one tonight that I'm aware of.
Okay. Um, as a reminder, people are welcome to do um, public engagement. They just have to fill out a form um, and then we'll invite them to speak or you can email us. Um, item number five, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting? So, seconded. Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Vice Chair Butt. Any discussion on the January tenth minutes? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Counselor Danahy. Counselor Santos.
Hi.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Hi.
And Vice Chair Butt?
Yes, and myself, yes.
Okay, item number six, public hearing, but we're two minutes early, right, Steve?
Correct.
So why don't we skip to item six B and set the public hearing date for the um, town of Wakefield Verizon, New England cable television license renewal? Uh, and that will be on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at seven oh five. So moved. Okay.
Second.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by um, Counselor Santos. Any discussion on setting the um, public hearing for Verizon contract renewal? Right now, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Hi.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Still have one minute. Um. If there's anything that we can, I guess we can just wait a minute.
I move that we approve the um, library donation.
Perfect. Okay, so we have library donations. Um, skipping ahead to item number twelve. Um, in the amount of one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars from various donors with thanks. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Good.
Moved by um, Vice Chair Butt, um, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on the library donation? No? Um, Counselor Danahy? Motion to approve. Um, Counselor Santos?
Hi.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, that successfully brings us to seven oh five. Um. And we need a roll call to open the public hearing. Is that correct? Okay. So do I, do we, and we need a motion as well? Okay, so I need a motion to open the public hearing for JWR family, um, company DBA sidebar.
So moved to open the meeting.
I can. To move by Counselor uh, Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion? No, we'll do a roll call vote to open. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, public hearing is hereby open. For JWR family doing business as, am I saying it right? Sidebar?
Sidebar.
Sidebar, okay.
And the attorney for the um, applicant is on with us also.
Okay, is that Ms. Do?
Annika, yes.
Okay, you, you're welcome to proceed.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, do you want to just present?
Sure, um, my name is Veronica Do. I'm an attorney with MT Law. We represent JY Family Co. in the application for alcohol license. Uh, so JY Family Co. recently purchased a bar located at one zero seven Water Street. And we're just looking to get the alcohol license approved. Thank you.
Um. Any? Questions from the councilors?
Julie, is it one oh seven Water Street or one oh nine? The agenda says one oh. It's one oh nine.
Oh, it should be one oh nine, ma'am, so because it's a relatively long building.
Okay. Just want to make sure the right address is on the application.
Great.
Sure.
Um, and I know Ed always asks this question, but I'll ask it as well. Um, everything has been completed. Um, Sherry, Steve, others, to the satisfaction of? People who do these things?
Yep, the, yep, the applications on the portal, um, the departments um, are in the process of signing off on it and um, we have to send it to the ABBCC for um, for them to approve it also.
Very good. Um, Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to confirm, um, this is simply a transfer license. We're not expanding the, the scope, correct?
Uh, yes, sir. I do understand that your town does not process the transfer, but there is no change in the scope, for sure.
And I think there was also um, um, tip certified. Everyone is complying in that way.
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
So if there's no other questions that we can do after our motion, I'll entertain a motion to um, transfer the all alcohol liquor license for JWR Family Co. doing business as a bar.
And I'm sure, I'm sorry, do we just, I, I, Mr. Wall, do we just have to see that anyone from the public has any comment?
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, yes, it is a public hearing, right?
Of course. So um, at this time, we'll open it up to the public. You can just raise your hand or indicate.
I don't see anybody has raised their hand.
Okay, okay. Okay, so um, so then we can close the public section of the public hearing. And entertain a motion.
So moved. Okay.
So um, moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos to um, transfer the all alcohol liquor license for one oh nine Water Street, JWR Family Co. doing business as a bar. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Hi.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Very good. Thank you so much for coming. Um, we will close the public hearing. Um, so I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Um, any discussion? Roll call vote, Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt?
But? Yes.
Myself, yes. Great. Okay. Moving right along. Um, item number seven, recommendation of fiscal year budget. Um, basically your twenty twenty-three budgets. Uh, Finance Committee Town Hall Subcommittee presents. So do we have anybody from the Finance Committee here?
Uh, yes, Evan Kenny is on, if they could just.
Yeah, he's coming over now.
Okay, great, we'll wait for him. We'll let him go first and then we'll move right into budgets, Mr. Gill. Good evening, Mr. Kenny.
Good evening, councilors. Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um. I'll uh, just touch on, on uh, some of the points that stood out for the Subcommittee and then let um, Steve or Kevin, I don't know, is Kevin still on vacation?
Um, no, Kevin came back.
Okay, so whoever, whoever's running through these uh, from the administration, I'll, I'll just let them do that instead of being redundant, but um, we, you know, we have a couple of budgets here where it looks like we're increasing FTEs net, 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 and uh, Steve has um, some carefully thought out uh, reasons for that. Um, I don't think there was much, if any, pushback from the committee, from the Subcommittee on uh, those items. I will tell you, um, one uh, subject that came up was in the Veterans Budget where we have, we've kept our appropriation on, on chapter one fifteen benefits to veterans, flat for a number of years. Um, but there's been a, a pretty steep. Um. And I, I don't know if it's linear, but it, it, it looks like it's, it, to me, it looks promising that it's going to continue to decline. Um, that was a subject of discussion, you know, do we um, do we, this year, do we uh, uh, trim down the appropriation to more accurately reflect the spend? There are some variables there that I, that I know Steve uh, mentioned, which are um, you know, largely, A, the pandemic might have been scaring folks off from coming into the office or, or whatever, so we might not have. Uh, the, the trend line may not be as uh, steeply declining as it, as it looks on paper. Um, and also uh, the uh, Veteran Service Officer is um, out on a mission to sort of increase outreach and maximize outreach because of course, any veteran who's eligible for these benefits, we, we really want to um, make sure they're aware of it and, and are getting the benefits they're entitled to, so um, there was some discussion about that. Steve's ready, he thinks, to do it uh, next year in terms of trimming it down. I, I, I and some other members had some questions about whether we need to wait until next year. Um, but I'll let Steve talk to that when we get there. I just wanted to uh, let you folks know where the points of discussion were. Uh, but other than that, you get a pretty uneventful, straightforward uh, group of budgets.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, there's no questions um, from Mr. Kenny. We'll move right into um, budget number four, Treasury. Kevin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first budget tonight is the Treasurer's Budget. We're recommending that this budget be increased seven thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars. This increase is all in personal services and is due to contractual and negotiated increases. Uh, major expenses within this budget. There's a line item, thirteen thousand dollars for tax title. That's for attorney's costs and land court fees. There's a line item for bank charges, seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, used to maintain the town's bank accounts and cost of checks. Uh, we, we do collect some revenue in this department. We do collect tax title revenue. In fiscal twenty-two, year-to-date, we've collected over sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, in fiscal twenty-one, we collected eighty-eight, over eighty-eight thousand. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is two hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we can take a motion on this?
So moved. Seconded.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by um, Counselor Santos. Open it up again for any discussion. There is none. Um, take a roll call vote. This is for two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and seven, two hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars um, for budget number four, the Treasurer, Treasury Department. Um, Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, budget number eighteen, fire alarm.
Uh, next budget, fire alarm budget. We are recommending an increase to this budget for fiscal twenty-three of three thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. Uh, this department's been very busy uh, due to the ongoing development within town. They've been doing utility pole changeovers, fixing and replacing aging traffic lights. They also maintain the traffic signals at various intersections throughout town. And private master boxes within private uh, businesses. We do charge for the cost of those uh, master boxes that are in the private businesses. We collect uh, two hundred and twenty-five dollars each. And annually, we collect over thirty thousand dollars. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is sixty-six thousand seven hundred dollars.
Any questions on this? Um, Counselor Chines?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this, uh, through you may be a question to Mr. Mayo. I, I knew you uh, alluded to um, some additional maintenance costs in this budget in, in the write-up that you had, shared with us. I just wanted to see, is there any sort of unmet capital need here? Excuse me, capital need here or, or anything from a, a sort of replacement standpoint that, that we should be, you know, thinking about in terms of uh, long-term opportunities here?
Um, I don't think at this time, I think uh, what, the, the parts and the P and uh, and supplies are increasing in price and that's why, that's why that went up, but um, as we do look at um, new developments, we do try to pull that cost into their cost. So I think that's where we're trying to get it from, you know, developers and things like that. But that is something that's on our radar and we've kind of uh, held it pretty well so far, but we'll constantly look at that, so.
Got it. Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine it's surprising that sort of the, the parts and labor are going up just even the way costs are going everywhere.
Getting the parts too is an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Um, do I have a motion for sixty-six thousand seven hundred dollars for the fire alarm budget?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. Move by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any more discussion? Do a roll call vote. Um, and Danahy, Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Uh, people are moving around on me. Um, Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hi.
Uh, Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Um, budget nineteen, emergency management.
Emergency Management Budget, we are requesting an increase to this budget of thirteen thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars over the current year. This increase is all in personal services and is for a negotiated salary increase. And also an increase in hours from eighteen hours a week to twenty-three hours a week. Uh, Tom Walsh, the Emergency Management Director, uh, he's been going non-stop with the, the COVID situation here in town. Uh, I'm sure he's been on multiple times uh, to give you updates. Uh, main expenses within this budget, uh, under contractual services, there's a ten thousand dollar line item for the emergency operation setup, which is over at the Public Safety Building. Those funds are used to uh, upgrade and keep the maintenance of equipment in that uh, control center up to date. And also there's a line item, sixteen thousand dollars for the notification system, which is the reverse nine-one-one that the town uses. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. If I can uh, jump in, Madam Chair, real quick, um, you know, uh, this budget, um, this position which we did not have four or five years ago, uh, we added this in separately and, you know, thank God we did, particularly with where we've been in the last few years, so it's been uh, a, a wonderful partnership. Um, I, I, when I say going from eighteen to twenty-three hours a week, we're way beyond twenty-three hours a week right now. This is what's on the books. So, I mean, I talk to Tom all the time, um, twenty-four seven, so. Um, small increase to keep this, keep this uh, going. Um, and I think as we go forward, this is one of those budgets, you know, in the future, we're going to be looking at, you know, more and more um, from active shooter training that we've done. These are things that, you know, I'm not going to say were put on the back burner because they continue during this whole COVID thing as well, because they have to. You know, continuity of operations and things like that, we're working on, so. Lot going on here, not just, you know, what you see um, uh, during the COVID crisis.
Great, um, wasn't paying attention to whatever, but Counselor Santos?
Um, thank you. I always like to bring up that this was my um, most, the vote I regret the most because I initially voted against this position. And I had my reasons way back when, pre-COVID, pre-a lot of things. Um, but man, was I wrong. And I think, um, you know, partly because Tom has been just so phenomenal, but I also think when Tom at some point um, decides to leave us, he's shown us what we can do with this position, and I think this position can support our town in so many different ways and act um, in partnership, collaborating with Board of Health, with the police, obviously with um, Town Administrator. It really is a, for short money, I would argue, we have gotten our bang for our buck. We could not have pictured the pandemic coming um, when we put Tom in and when we created this position. And I just think now going forward, I can't believe a town would not have this. So yeah, it's still my probably worst vote as a town counselor. And I'm glad I was uh, outvoted on that, uh, so I am heartily in support of this.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and I'll, I'll start off by saying that I think Tom Walsh has done a phenomenal job. You know, having worked with him directly, I see that um, you know, about, I don't even think you can count on, you know, um, on ten hands how many hours like Tom spent in a given week, so I know that, I recognize that we have gotten more than um, a value out of him. He's been incredibly generous with his time and, and provided great expertise. My concern with this, and, and I have no problem um, with um, the increase in the, but in, in this budget for this particular year to increase these hours. Um, my concern is that I, I, we're in, like, uh, we're in a very different time now. You know, we're in the middle of a worldwide pandemic. Um, this is certainly more of an anomaly than um, you know, I guess what you'd call normal times. And so I would support this budget with the understanding that um, it should be reevaluated next year relative to whether the twenty-three hours is still appropriate for it. I recognize that we could probably realize value in expanding uh, lots of positions, but I think we also have to be mindful of, of that, of the creep that we have, you know, that we have this budget creep that happens and Tom has been worth every penny and then some. Um, but when hopefully this pandemic subsides, I don't see the, the um, the need to, to the same extent necessarily um, going, you know, after we are, are past COVID. So I, I think that approaching it on a, this is what we're doing for this year, but going forward, I don't think there should be a presumption that this, this is a twenty-three hour position. That's, so I'm voting in support of this budget, you know, with the understanding that that would be something I would come back to next year. I don't know whether um, Mr. Kenny or uh, Mr. Gill or Mr. Mayo, if there had been any discussions about that and, and the fact that, you know, this is more circumstantial, I would argue, than necessarily setting up a, a direction um, indefinitely for this role.
I, I, I think it's in an, an important position, but this is a year-to-year budget, so we're, we evaluate it every year.
Um, Counselor Chines?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I had a, a couple of, a couple of issues I wanted to touch upon. Um, one of them is actually related to Counselor Dombrowski's point, but um, I, I also want to uh, sort of look at the opposite component, which is, I, I am a, a little concerned about the number of hours that Mr. Walsh is putting in while being paid as a part-time employee. I mean, I, I think, you know, we need to evaluate the position year over year, but, you know, we also should be making sure that, you know, if we're getting uh, in what I imagine in the last two years has been full-time plus work, that, you know, we're, we're not undercutting the, the salary that, that he deserves. And so I, I, you know, maybe would encourage um, sort of outside of this discussion as we look at, you know, some of the grant support we've gotten, some of the other uh, funds that have been available for pandemic relief that, you know, if there is uh, sort of in uh, in underpayment of Tom because of the time that he's put in, that that's something that, that we uh, reflect upon and, and take seriously. I mean, it's uh, he has been a, quite frankly, a godsend to the town over the last two years. I don't know how we would have gotten to where we are in pandemic response if it weren't for him. And uh, you know, as Mr. Mayo mentioned, I mean, the fact that, you know, he's nineteen hours on the books and probably has been doing at least double that much of the time is, is something that I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing for uh, a valued employee. And again, obviously, we reevaluate this every year. We do budgets every year, and so I, I think it's something that we've got to continue to look at the long-term need in this area. Uh, and make sure that we're titrating up the, the expectations of the position uh, in parallel to what that need is. The, the second point I just wanted to raise, and, and Mr. Mayo, this is a question for you. Um, on the emergency ops center budget, um, this is one where we, we really haven't spent very, spent very much of this budget for the last couple of years and um, I, I don't know if that's something that, that you can speak about just in terms of um, you know, the need there, kind of the long-term expectations for uh, for that line item, just, just given that, you know, we've appropriated not a, not a huge amount of money, but um, certainly a lot more than we've actually, uh, we've actually spent in the last two or three years.
Yeah, I think that, I don't know if Kevin can add to that. I think that, you know, we did do a lot of upgrades there previously, the few years before, and I think through the COVID thing, it kind of was one of those things that just didn't, didn't move up to the, to the top level. So I don't know if Kevin has anything more to add there. There's, there's always going to be upgrades in that area. There, there also was some, some equipment um, and upgrades done over there. Uh, they, they were charged off to the uh, uh, COVID cares funds that came in. They were, they were eligible under COVID cares. So instead of spending out of the operating budget, those expenses were covered uh, another way.
Okay.
Also with some, also with some of Tom's salary also, um, that some was charged off to where he was working uh, basically full-time. A portion of his salary was charged off there also.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any additional discussion? Um, okay, do I have a motion to accept the emergency management budget in the amount of eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. More discussion? No. Roll call vote, Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, moving on to inspectional services.
Uh, in Special Services Department, we are recommending an increase to this budget of fifty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. There's an increase in personal services, fifty-three thousand seven forty-nine. Uh, this includes a new clerical position, a C-six position. And is also has contractual and negotiated increases in that number. Uh, the additional position uh, is something we, we, Steve and I, uh, the department head feels is needed because of the workload within that department. Uh, and, anyone that comes into Town Hall, if you walk by the building department, you, you'll always see a line basically a, at the window uh, looking to get either a permit or, or something from the building inspector or uh, the office there. Uh, main expenses within this department, uh, vehicle allowance, sixty-six hundred dollars. It's a contractual item. Uh, we, we do, we do pull, pull in a lot of revenue uh, from the building department. In fiscal nineteen, we collected over nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. In fiscal twenty, it was over a million dollars. Uh, last year it was almost seven hundred thousand. Um, so the, the amount of work that's being done in that office with, with one clerical, uh, we, we feel it's uh, really important for that new position. Uh, total budget request for fiscal twenty-three, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Any discussion on the Inspection Services Department? Counselor Chines?
I would just maybe ask, I, I think I see Mr. Christopher on as well, uh, just maybe for a little bit more context around um, not just the financials that we've brought in in terms of permitting fees, but just the number of permits we're processing. Um, I know some of the work's gone or is going online. Uh, some color on the impact that we, we expect that to have on, on the department's workload as well. Ben, I think you're muted.
You're muted, Ben. You're still muted. But you're still muted.
Still muted.
Yeah, it's something on his end.
It's on his end, okay.
Yeah.
Um, while Ben's trying to unmute himself.
No?
No.
Benny, we still can't hear you.
Ben, if you want to plug your earphones maybe and go with the speaker, that's worked for me sometimes.
Yeah, same.
Well, while Ben's trying to figure it out, I'll try to answer some of uh, some Jonathan's questions about the number of permits issued. Um, in uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-five hundred forty-seven permits were issued.
in the department. Just trying to do the math, what is that per, you know? That's a lot of permits, a lot of information. Uh, in twenty-twenty, twenty-two fifty-two, and in two thousand nineteen, twenty-three fifty-nine. So there's a lot of permits that are being issued to this department. And I think one thing that was, you know, we found that some of our neighbors didn't, didn't do is that we kept our building department open through the entire pandemic. I mean, we were accepting applications, uh, doing inspections virtual, I mean, going out in front of the house and they were showing us pictures and what have you and, and FaceTiming, I guess. And, um, a lot of our, uh, compadres didn't, which led to a number of things. A, a very angry citizenry that couldn't get anything done. And I think I told you all the story about getting, um, accosted at one of the local restaurants about someone that couldn't get a permit, couldn't get any inspections. And I said, well, wait a minute. And he says, oh, I'm sorry, this isn't another community. I just, I'm just venting. But why are you venting to me? So that happened, but people did the work anyway. People, you know, engaged, uh, either local contractors or family members or friends. They did electrical plumbing. Not only did the town miss out on the, uh, revenue for the permit fees, but which is less important, but maybe you had unsafe conditions. And what will happen is when the homeowner goes to sell and says, hey, put in a new kitchen, I'll tell you, the realtors, the realtors, the buyers, the appraisers go down to the building apartment and say, can I see all the permits for, let's say, two Jackson Lane, my house? Well, there's no permit for your, for your kitchen. What do you mean your kitchen's new? Causes a lot of problem for them. We've also looked at other communities around us, um, and I'll tell you around us, they have, they seem to have a more, uh, have more staff than we do even with this other position. So I don't like to, to add staff, um, lightly. Uh, I think long and hard about it. I think what's the long-term effects here. And I think here, uh, this is very busy. Um, you, you, you could even ask the greeters at town hall. Most people are going to building. They're going to town clerk, they're filing something. They're going to building and they're there five, six deep in line at building. So I said, you know, come at eight AM in the morning and, and greet me there. So I think we will, A, process permit, permits faster, which means we'll get more permits, we'll have a happier public, um, and we'll service the public better. And we have a department that's making money and continue to make more. Going more online with the permits will actually create more work on the backend. Because let me tell you, these won't be, um, probably won't be as complete as they should be. People won't have their, uh, uh, workers' comp insurance or things like that. So I whole, wholeheartedly think this is a, uh, a great position to move us forward on and to, uh, give the, give the public a better, a better service and continue to help a, a busy department.
Steve, I'm not quite sure. Can anyone hear me? So the number one reason why I need a, uh, an online permit expedite is to help me with my computer and learn how to unmute myself. But thank you, Steve. But, but I think the, the main focus, uh, for this individual will be to, to, to assist us in the, uh, on the administrative end and on the online permitting end. Um, I think it's, it's needed for a number of reasons. One is that, the, the complications of the online permitting and, and the, uh, uh, the efficiency of someone being there to help and answer questions, uh, will alleviate those questions being asked to Gail, who is overburdened on a daily basis with a number of things, including phone calls. But I think that the, the online permitting actually will increase our permit count as well, like Steve alluded to.
Did I answer your question, Jonathan?
It, it did. Thank you. And, and I'm supportive of this as well. I mean, I, I think this is the type of scenario where, you know, we have to staff to the volume that we, we have. And so, you know, I, I, I know that you've taken kind of a thorough look at sort of the need for the position and, and kind of the, you know, the support model that's required. I, I like the idea that, you know, we're looking at, uh, an administrative position that helps kind of smooth the way for some of these permits rather than tying up, you know, folks that have more of the technical expertise and, and work that doesn't necessarily require that, that technical expertise, given how, how hard it is to find folks that, uh, you know, can do the inspections and do them well. So I, I'm supportive of this. I think it's the right move.
I think, yeah, I think if I could add one more thing, Madam Chair, is that, um, you know, this, um, department and the, and the administrative support in this, in this department, there's a lot of knowledge there, you know, a lot of knowledge that needs to be imparted to the homeowner or the contractor coming in. You know, what do you need to file for? Um, uh, what is the zoning in that area? What does that mean? No, you don't need to have, um, an architect do that. There's a specification that the building inspector will go over with you, um, on the product. Those, that, that's a knowledge base that's grown over a long time to a very valuable employee in that, uh, in that department. And we need to kind of make sure that we have a succession plan for that, that we're moving on and that we don't, we don't miss a beat as we go forward. So it's, um, it's, it's really probably a long time coming for this department. And I see nothing but more growth there, frankly, in, in permitting. So I'm not worried about there not being enough work. There's plenty of work that's coming on. Just from what I know is on the horizon.
Okay. Councillor Nebraska.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have a few things on this position. So first off, just to clarify, this, this is a full-time position, correct?
Correct.
So I, I don't follow how, um, processing permits faster is going to lead to more permits being submitted. I mean, I think it might lead to people being excited that their permits have gone through faster, but like, I, I don't, I don't follow that, that thinking that if we process permits faster, then more are just going to be generated. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that comes to be.
Well, well, councillor, on roofing and siding permits, um, I could tell you that the ease of an online permitting for roofing and siding will absolutely increase the, the volume of those permits, because those are uh, uh, permits that can basically, uh, are work that can basically be started on a Friday and finished on a, you know, a Saturday morning. We, enforcement is not there to kind of see what's going on. I mean, actually, this weekend I caught someone on a, uh, Thursday night doing a permit. I mean, I'm sorry, a, a roof. So I think the increase in volume will be on that end, um, and the efficiency of, um, basically the, the, the online permitting would help as well.
Well, we already, we already have the online permitting, but so, and as recently last week, you, you still had an experience where someone was doing something without being permitted. So how is it that if I assume that the person was doing it because they didn't want to get pulled a permit, not because they, it was going to be too slow to get it approved? So that's why, right? So that's.
Well, not really. Not really. Roofing, roofing and siding permits, I, those are the, uh, those are the permits that kind of, they don't want to take the time out of their day to come down to the building department and to submit an application. Um, and that's, that's on the minority, not, that's, not the majority of, of roofing and siding contracts do that, but some do. Um, but the ease of online permitting, uh, entices people to, 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 to do the right thing and pull permits.
Okay, so with that then, um, to your point, the ease of the online permitting, I agree with. And I think that that's why we're trying to migrate any number of departments towards to, um, online, you know, submissions, because I think that does, uh, free up a degree of bandwidth to the, you know, the human, the human interaction that would have been, you know, required afterwards. I mean, undoubtedly, that's, that's, that's an improvement. Um, but I don't, um, I, I don't agree with the idea of, of just basically creating this new position and saying, well, this is part of a, like, succession planning. And that this person, this one person in particular has so much knowledge. I like Gal. I mean, I think she's great. But I think that that's, that's an organizational problem if we have so much dependence on any one person. Because Gail could, you know, um, God forbid, take ill tomorrow. She could leave for another position, uh, uh, off, you know, with two weeks' notice, any number of things. So.
Well, councillor, councillor to your point, and that's the issue. There is only one person. So this person would be supplemental to Gail's administrative end as well. So she'll, she'll be complimenting Gail and, and that's adding to our administrative end. I could tell you that I did a surrounding study of, of surrounding communities and, uh, we are actually of, of other towns, I should say. Um, and we are probably the only one that has one administrative person, uh, that does the, the amount of work Gail does. Every other community has two, uh, two administrative people beyond the, the inspectors. I mean, that's another whole story. And I felt at this point it was smart to submit for a administrative side for two things, like, well, a number of things, like Steve said, in the long run, a succession plan. Um, that person has to have the knowledge uh, uh, of what's happening in the department and some technical skills as well as some zoning skills. I mean, so there's, there's a vast number of things that they have to really kind of, um, gain knowledge on.
But I, I think the challenge is that, I mean, while I understand every department sees the need for more, um, the reality is that if, if, if we become so, so dependent upon one person or the knowledge that is imparted upon one or two people, that we can't have an easy tran- transition to other people, then that's a problem. Because inherently, you know, in, in, you know, um, you know, our current economy, we're going to have people that are going to be bouncing positions. And somebody that comes in now may not stay for very long, or they might stay for twenty years. We don't know that, but we can't we can't plan around, you know, that, that's not succession planning. Succession planning is being able to, to have a clear, you know, roadmap forward, which is probably something like, like a manual. As, you know, a, a good, it provides a good resource to anybody filling that role. It's maybe bringing someone in if you're saying there's a lot to be learned. You know, trying to seek as much advanced, you know, notice that someone's departing as possible and maybe try to have some overlap for say three laps, it's a three, three months versus say, say two weeks. But we, again, we can't even control that part of it. But I, I don't, I just don't, I don't see how, you know, this is a, a, a reasonable succession planning approach. Uh, we can't do it. And as far as like a single person working in departments, we have what Cindy in health? We have Sherry in town administrators, you know, I mean, I, I'm sure that if I, if I asked Sherry, she could identify, you know, um, tasks that she could assign to someone else if she had, had the luxury. I would imagine the same for Cindy in health as well. I mean, that's during a pandemic too. But, I mean, the reality is, you know, uh, FTE, it's not, you know, we're adding on, I know the fifty-three seven four nine is not just for the new positions, obviously increases there, um, for the other two, yourself, um, Ben and, and Gail. But that doesn't include, um, all the benefits. So that, that's another, you know, basically thirty, thirty-three percent that we're adding on top of that, that's not captured in your budget, but is captured in the town's budget. Um, and the whole point of, of going online, I thought, was to streamline processes to make things more straightforward. And if that's not being accomplished, I think we need to reevaluate, um, how we're, how we are approaching this, because I, we, we just can't keep having, you know, um, adding, adding this payroll on, you know, with these new positions. It creates, you know, uh, ultimately unsustainable growth. And I understand that you get money, that you end up, you know, getting revenue coming in from what you're permitting and processing. Candidly, um, the, the building projects that are going on here are going to go on here, you know, um, and we're going to get paid, you know, for them in, in, in the fees, you know, they have to pay. That's, that's going to be the reality of it. Um, so I, I, I just do not feel comfortable with the idea of adding this. I mean, if you said, hey, I need to bring in some sort of, you know, part-time help for the coming year alone, I think that's a different discussion to be had. And then we can perhaps reassess at that point. But the idea of adding a full-time position, because we're trying to potentially do succession planning, that could be potentially years off from what your, your letter which you have says. I, I just don't agree with that approach. I don't think that's, that's how we should work with that. I don't want to establish positions that we, in the future, likely to be struggling to try to fill, um, you know, um, holes in our budget for.
Well, well, councillor, in all due respect, it's, it's not just the succession plan. It's the succession plan along with the, the, um, the, the, the online permitting, um, coordinator and the administrative side. So, so.
So maybe that's an, maybe that's an eighteen-hour position for the coming year that kind of takes you some of the burden off, you know, um, it, it on temporary basis. I know we've, we've shifted, I know, like, town clerk's office, I recall, they've had, you know, um, temporary help come in. You know, we've had floaters before, um, you know, within town hall as needed. So maybe that's what it is. But, you know, the idea that we have to have two people on, in a full-time capacity when we have this online, you know, capability, it, it doesn't, it doesn't feel reasonable to me. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think everybody gets the point. I'm going to move on and then we can come back to this as well if we need to. Councillor Santos.
I'm really comfortable with the addition of this position, and it's not something I enter in lightly, hence my last comments about, um, Tom Walsh. I, I trust Steve. We've hired Steve as heart town administrator. I trust him to not go into these decisions lightly. I know ultimately we are the ones, um, ruling on it, but I also trust Benny to know what he needs in his office. We hired him. I view this in disagreement with that, I, I do view this as part of a succession planning. Certainly where I work, succession planning has to do with having solid people in an office that can move and, and take over if something, if someone, um, will leave. So I see the succession planning in addition to just meeting what Benny has said. I also think we can't talk in one hand about wanting to, um, create business in Wakefield, create business in downtown Wakefield, see all of the building and then be like, oh, not, we're not going to be like the rest of the towns around us and, and have just one administrator. So I am in full support of this based on people I trust, uh, suggesting that this is a very good addition. Thank you.
Councillor Chines, did you want to add anything?
You know, I just, uh, echo, uh, the, the comments that councillor Santos made with regard to both the succession planning aspect of it, and I think also the ease of doing business. And I think that's something, you know, particularly as we are, we are trying to uh, encourage our business community, grow our business community. I mean, that, that's also something that has, has value here.
And it feels like it's been pretty consistent in terms of the number of permits that you're processing, and it's, it's not just a temporary change in, in volume.
Correct, councillor. And I only see the numbers going up.
All right. Anybody, any addition? Well, we can take a motion then, continue discussion. Um, so it's a motion for four hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the building department. Um, do you have a motion?
So moved. Um, seconded.
I saw the second. Moved by councillor, um, but seconded by councillor Santos. Um, any additional discussion on this? No. So we're voting on a budget of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the building department, which includes the addition of fifty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine over last fiscal year. Um, councillor Danahue.
Yes.
Uh, councillor Santos.
I.
Councillor Chines.
Yes.
Councillor Dombrowski.
No.
Councillor Butt.
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that's a, a five yes, one no. Okay, um, recreation department.
Recreation budget, uh, we're requesting an increase over the current year of two thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. This increase is all in personal services and is for contractual and negotiated increase. This budget is covered from fees generated by the recreation programs put on during, during the town. These fees are deposited into the town's general fund. The expense portion of this budget is funded, funded to the town's, uh, revolving account, recreation revolving account. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is one hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Any discussion about the recreation department? I'll just say that I think they've done amazing work through the pandemic. They've really just been creative and, you know, keeping people of all ages engaged and have very good marketing. All right. So there's no discussion.
So as a, as a, a parent whose children have done a lot of rectification programs, not only have they kind of kept it going, but they've also added programs in the last two years that have been really creative and interesting. I, 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 you know, I, I think for what we get out of this department, I think the, the dollars that we spend for, uh, for Mr. McGrath are, are really short dollars relative to the benefit that he brings to the town.
Looking forward to the pickleball court. I'm sure he'll have something to do around that as well. Um, a motion to approve one hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three recreation department. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded, so moved by vice chair Butt, seconded by councillor Santos. Any additional discussion? No. So roll call vote, um, councillor Danahue.
Yes.
Councillor Chines.
Yes.
Councillor Santos.
I.
Councillor Dombrowski.
I.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Veteran Services.
Veteran Services, we are requesting an increase of three thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars over the current year. There's an increase in personal services, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which is contractual. There's an increase in personal services, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which is contractual and negotiated increase. Uh, there was an increase in contracted services in the professional services line item, one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, this line item is used to pay the town's portion of the municipal agreement that we share, uh, the veterans, uh, agent and the veteran service officer, with Melrose, Wakefield and Saugus. Uh, main expenses within this budget, uh, under contractual services is the professional services line item. The fifty-fifth, fifty-five thousand, sixty-seven dollars, uh, this is to be part of that agreement. The recipient line item, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is used for veterans' benefits. The dollars that we spend out of the recipient line item, we, we do get reimbursed by the state up to seventy-five percent. The past couple of years, I, I think due to COVID, the recipient number has been down. Um, going back to fiscal eighteen, we, we spent over a hundred and fifty thousand in veterans', uh, assistance. In fiscal nineteen, it was over a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Twenty, it was a hundred and thirty, uh, and then basically it fe- it fell off in twenty, uh, twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, I spoke with the veterans' agent, uh, Karen Burke. Um, she, she's talking about doing more outreach and she's concerned that the, the numbers are down because of the, the COVID pandemic. She, she, she would like to keep the number at a hundred and seventy thousand. She's doing more outreach and more advertising, uh, to try to get the numbers up. Um, she's hoping to bring on a couple new recipients, uh, shortly. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars.
Um, Counselor Santos?
Um, yeah, I appreciate what Evan Kenny said from FinCom. And certainly if the numbers still are low a few years out, I think taking a look at those numbers, um, is important, but I'm just concerned about dropping. I, I would go with what the recommendation is because the pandemic is so unique. And, and I'm uncomfortable dropping that during the pandemic and especially where we have the Veterans Officer now stepping up and saying that she's doing more outreach. Certainly look at it year to year, but I, not that, um, not comfortable dropping it this year. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Um, so I'll take a motion for, uh, approving two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for the Veterans Department budgets.
So moved.
Seconded, moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? If there isn't any, um, voting in favor of the Veterans Department budget, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, streetlights?
Uh, streetlight budget, we are requesting level funding. Cost of this budget is used to light approximately twenty-three hundred streetlights throughout the town. Total budget request, hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Any questions on this? Counselor Chines?
Just a quick question. I know part of this budget, uh, pays for the investment in LED lighting from the conversion we did a number of years ago. Mister, do you happen to know when that investment is, is kind of paid off?
Uh, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
And in, in twenty-twenty-six, our budget, this budget should go down approximately thirty thousand dollars.
Great, thank you.
Unless we add more lights between now and then.
Twenty-three hundred lights is a lot of lights.
I was gonna say thirty thousand dollars of lighting is probably not.
That's, I mean, you figure what, we're eighty-one miles of roads, right? Um, okay, so I will take a motion to approve one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars for the streetlight budget.
So moved.
Seconded, so moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? Counselor Dombrowski?
Um, this, the, this relates to the, the budget and what we were just talking about, but, um, going forward with, with a future agenda item, I really wanna see us, um, doing a much better job with, um, being dark skies compliant and really thinking about the light pollution that we have. Um, and I'm liaison to uh, gas and light, so certainly that's something that, you know, I'll continue to engage with them on. But, um, I do think that it is something that we really have to look at because sometimes even like the LEDs are replaced by brighter LEDs. And there's this kind of race to like brightness and I don't like fully understand it. Um, I, I hold to get the LEDs as a great idea, but that doesn't mean that we have to have it, you know, feel like it's daylight for people. And I, I see some homes and literally, I don't think they ever have actually darkness outside their window. Um, because I, it feels like we just keep like lighting, lighting, lighting. Um, and there are so many opportunities out there with, um, you know, dark skies compliant, you know, options that, um, it's something that I, I, I would like to see us, you know, have an agenda going forward. It's something I'd, I'd be happy to, to work with whomever else is interested in it, but I think we have to do a better job with that because I feel like we're kind of like, like many towns, we're kind of, like the light is just kind of taking over and night is a night anymore, um, in, in this community and so many others.
So we have a motion that has been seconded. If there's no more discussion, we'll do a roll call vote for one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars for the streetlight budget. Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, Historical Commission?
Uh, the Historical Commission budget, we are requesting level funding. Main expenses within this budget, thousand thirty dollars for printing, which is used to advertise their meetings. Uh, five hundred dollars for materials and supplies, which is used for signage repair and upgrades. Total budget request, two thousand dollars.
Any discussion? They, uh, go ahead, Counselor Dombrowski.
I just wanted to mention, so I'm, I'm also the liaison, um, to this commission. And I do wanna try to work with them going forward to see if, um, it can be a more robust commission relative to trying to preserve what we have left of the character of our town. I know that right now there, there isn't a lot of, um, there aren't a lot of, of, of opportunity to try to preserve, you know, uh, it's like, almost like as a matter of right, you can do a whole lot of stuff, um, that really just takes down a lot of the character of our community. So, um, going forward, you know, it's possible that we may want to look at how, uh, you, at, at, and, and, and increase our expansion of this budget if the scope of what the commission does, you know, may potentially um, expand going forward. But it's supported its current, you know, state obviously in this amount.
Um, Mr. Gil, so if you say they advertise their meetings, is that like alerting neighbors when they are making historical uh, determinations, things like that?
Correct.
Okay, so, so those do have to be physical printed mailed things?
And posted in the newspaper.
And posted, okay. Okay, so that's why they have a standalone budget as opposed to some of the other commissions in town.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on the Historical Commission? It's a good reminder that, um, there's a lot of positions open in a lot of these committees and commissions right now, so this is probably one of them. Um, I'll take a motion to approve two thousand dollars for the Historical Commission budget for fiscal year twenty-three.
So moved.
Seconded, so moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? Um, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Okay.
Unemployment?
Uh, next budget is the unemployment budget. We are requesting level funding. Uh, this budget is a, is split into two line items, twenty-five thousand dollars for town unemployment, fifty thousand dollars for school unemployment. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is seventy-five thousand dollars.
Discussion on unemployment? Counselor Chines?
Thank you. I, I guess just a, a question. I'm, I'm surprised that the, the year-to-date spend is so low. Um, any sort of thoughts or context on, on that?
Um, I think there probably are some, um, expenditures or some bills in there that I would call legit. There are a lot that I will not, that I do not call with legit because of issues that happened at the Division of unemployment assistance. So we are sifting through that and I anticipate second half catching up a little bit, but I don't think we'll hit the seventy-five thousand.
Got it, but we, I mean, I think there's like seventeen hundred of spend so far. It sounds like we're still sorting out between the, unfortunately, some of the unemployment scams we saw versus the legitimate claims. Okay, thank you.
And, and so the public knows the town pays, um, on a, um, on, on a billable basis. We pay as we go. If you have your private company, you're paying a percentage of payroll that's going into the Division of Unemployment, um, Assistance. And then they, they look at it that way. For us, you know, I know that, uh, so-and-so is unemployed. And I will tell you that during the pandemic, a lot of people were unemployed that, geez, I saw to work every day. And it was either, uh, uh, they were hacked or there was some misunderstanding. So although the state has looked for, um, us to pay them and then they'll, they'll pay us back later on when they collect it, if they do indeed collect it. Um, I, I'm not so sure that's the way to do it. So come, thank you, come visit me.
Counselor Dombrowski? Oh, you're on mute. I think you hit your mute.
I just wanted to credit Mr. Mayo on that point because, um, I know that, um, you know, he's indicated some other communities are just taking out harbor funds and just paying it and it's, it, I, I appreciate you, the work that you're doing, Steve, to make sure that we're not doing that because I don't think that is the correct approach, um, at all. And, um, yeah, to your point, you know, if, if they wanna, you know, challenge you on it, then I think you have a pretty good, you know, I think you have, you have pretty good backing from all of us because it's the right, what you're doing is the right thing to do under these circumstances. So thank you for that. Thank you for.
Thank you. A, a cake, a cake with a file in it will be perfect.
Um, okay, so we'll take a motion for seventy-five thousand dollars for the unemployment budgets.
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion on the unemployment budget? There is none. Um, Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, Reserve Fund?
Uh, next budget is the Reserve Fund budget. We requested this budget be level funded. Uh, this budget is used for unforeseen, unbudgeted or under-budgeted expenses and emergencies. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is four hundred thousand dollars.
Discussion on the Reserve Fund? I'm seeing none. I'll take a motion for four hundred thousand dollar, approval of four hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal twenty-three Reserve Fund.
So moved.
Seconded, so moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? No, we'll do a roll call vote of four hundred thousand dollars for the Reserve Fund. Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Santos? Yes. Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Professional Medical?
Uh, professional magical, medical, we are requesting that this budget be level funded. Uh, this budget is used mainly for new hire, uh, new employee hire physicals. Uh, but also may include, uh, mandatory Department of Transportation physicals for employees with CDL licenses and return to work physicals as needed. Uh, total budget request is ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. I'm sorry, ten thousand, eight fifty with eight thousand, three fifty coming from the tax levy. Uh, twelve hundred and fifty dollars coming from the Water Enterprises and twelve hundred and fifty coming from the Sewer Enterprise.
Is there discussion on the, what are we calling it? Professional Medical Department budget. Counselor Chines?
Thank you. Ju- just a question on this one. This is one where it looks like we've overspent this account, uh, the last couple of years. And so I, I wanted just to, to get, uh, Mr. Gil, Mr. Mayo, your take on, you know, whether this is something that we should look at stepping up a little bit over time or, um, if there's a reason why we think it might, uh, the spending might come back down to the budgeted level as we look at, at fiscal twenty-three.
Well, we, we, oh, what, you wanna go, Kevin? Go ahead.
Um, on, on this budget here, um, i- if, if there are retirements in, in public safety, police and fire, the, the physicals, uh, for those individuals, the public safety individuals, uh, are much more expensive. Um, there's psych evaluations and certain things that the regular town employee doesn't have to go through. Um, those, uh, public safety physicals can run up to fifteen hundred dollars each. So if you bring on two or three new public safety, um, individuals during a year, which is a lo- usually, uh, we don't bring on that many, but, uh, in the past, was it two years ago, I think we did, so we did go over budget, uh, that, you know, we had to do a reserve fund transfer. Uh, but, but usually we're, we're not bringing on, uh, that many individuals in public safety.
Okay, so we, it sounds like we just had a couple of sort of fluky years in terms of the, the, uh, effectively the mix of physicals that we had to do?
Exactly.
Okay, great, thank you.
And, and this doesn't include things like COVID testing or anything like that, right?
That's correct.
So there's nothing to do with the current pandemic, okay? Um.
We, we do a physical, you know, before we hire people to make sure that, you know, we're not inheriting anything that we're gonna end up.
I see. Makes sense. Um, okay, so we need a motion for the Professional Medical Department in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do I have to go through where it comes from? From the tax levy and reserves or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of which, um, eight hundred, eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars comes from the, um, tax levy, um, one thousand, two hundred and fifty from the Water Department and one thousand, two hundred and fifty from the Sewer Department. Do I have a motion?
So moved and thank you, Julie.
Seconded.
Um, moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion on the Professional Medical Department? There's none. We will vote on the total of ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, coming from a combination of water sewer and tax levy. Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Tax Department?
Um, Tax Department, uh, there, there was a question at last meeting, uh, this, this budget was tabled. Uh, I, I believe, uh, there was a response from, uh, Kathy Kelly, our tax collector, uh, and, and I was wondering if that sufficed.
Um, y- yes, so I circulated, um, or actually, Steve circulated, um, the response from, um, Catherine Kelly. I hope everybody got a chance to look at that. Um, so, I mean, essentially, um, she can look into it, but I don't know, Steve, whether you wanna explain or Counselor or, uh, Mr. Mullen?
So I'm, I'm Madam Chair, as I understand it, the question that was raised at the last meeting was whether we might achieve some economies by, uh, uh, sending out tax bills electronically or at least having the option to do so rather than, uh, uh, spending money on paper and mail. And the legal answer is yes, we may.
Yeah.
Um, but the, uh, Kathy Kelly brought up a number of, um, practical considerations about, uh, whether it would actually save money, um, and to what extent.
So Ed, I mean, I think this was a question that you had raised, or are you satisfied with the, the response?
I, I actually, I read this response, but then I had a long conversation with, with Kathy Kelly as well.
Okay.
And, um, and so I explained to her that I was gonna also just raise with, with the council tonight, just more like a bigger picture. Um, we, there, there are a number of different directions potentially to go in, uh, relative to this. Um, a lot, a lot needs to be done. I think Kathy was concerned about what the initial financial outlay would be for, in, for, um, so, technology, infrastructure improvements, if you will. Um, and I explained to her that, the sense that I got from this, this body is that if ultimately we're able to realize, you know, greater efficiencies and ultimately have a cost savings in the long term, then those sorts of investments would probably be something that this body would be willing to, to look at. Um, and so for this coming fiscal year, it's not going to be realistic to have that because it's not just, it's not just the Tax Department, it would carry over, you know, um, across several different departments. But Kathy was, was absolutely willing, you know, to, you know, work with me and anyone else. me, anyone else on the council and any other departments, because I think we have need to have a a bit, obviously IT, have a bit more coordinated approach to exploring, because otherwise it would be a lot of uh people that would be giving her demonstrations, her personal demonstrations, which she was not interested in because it was, again, it's a bigger, it's a bigger question. So um I think that that's a dialogue that we'll need to have ongoing a- as a council. So perhaps soon at the next meeting, we could, you know, or soon, some meeting soon, we could think about how, you know, put a little task force together, somebody to just explore that, make sure that.
That was my sense that we weren't gonna get a change for this year, but it's something certainly to look forward to going forward, which is why I wanted it back on the agenda so we could.
Exactly. So that's 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 the bottom line, but I think we can, I think we actually can realize savings, but I think it's going to be more thoughtful than just looking at the Tax Department budget.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Chines.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I I agree with that. I, the one point that I want to raise here is that as as part of this evaluation and before we get too far, um, we may need to think about whether or not we bring on, you know, the Collin Center or another entity just to help with sort of the the planning and management of this. I I think this is a pretty big operational lift and um, you know, as I, as I think about sort of how our departments are run, um, you know, it's hard for kind of any anyone to kind of do this on the side of their desk and do it well. And I think if we do this, we want to do it well and we want it to be thoughtful and we want it to be something that's both a a win for residents in terms of convenience and also something that does generate uh administrative savings for the town overall. And so you know, this might be an area, um, you know, Mr. Mayo, that I I would maybe encourage you to think about, you know, is there an outside resource that we could bring in? Again, just to help from sort of a project management and evaluation perspective. Um, you know, so that we're not, uh, no pun intended for for uh Ms. Kelly, overtaxing uh the staff that we have now that have kind of full-time jobs and expertise that don't sort of naturally lend themselves to kind of a process redesign effort like this.
Great. Um, so let me go back to the budgets. Um, so essentially then we would be looking at the proposed budget of two hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, um, of which two hundred thirty-six thousand six thirty-two would come from the tax levy. Um, and sixty thousand eight forty-three would come from DPW Water and Sewer. Do I have a motion?
I I think Madam Chair actually probably want to have a, take a motion first to take it off the table. Later on the table to take it off the table. I I hate to be a parliamentarian, but just.
So I'm so wait, we're we're taking the budget off the table. So first, we're gonna vote to take the budget off the table and then we'll actually vote on the budget. Okay, so do I have a motion to take the Tax Collector Department budget off the table?
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved by Counselor Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion of taking it off the table? So none. Um, we'll take a roll call vote. Council, everybody's moved again. Counselor Danahue.
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Santos.
I.
Counselor Dombrowski.
I.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so now we can move forward with voting on the Tax Collector Budget, um, which for fiscal year twenty-three is a total of two hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, of which two hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred thirty-two come from the tax levy and sixty thousand eight forty-three from the DPW Water and Sewer Division. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved. Seconded.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion? Additional discussion. Now, if there is none, um, then we'll take a roll call vote on the total Tax Collector Department Budget. Counselor Danny.
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Santos.
I.
Counselor Dombrowski.
I.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, I think that concludes item number eight budgets. We will see you again in two weeks or two or three weeks, the next meeting, I guess.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Okay, item number nine is approval of the special town election warrant for um the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Um, it is in the packets. It would be a me, uh, it's an election, seven AM to eight PM at the Galvin Middle School, so regular um, regular times. Do I have a motion to approve the um special election town, special town election warrant for February twenty-second?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by um Counselor Santos. Any discussion on this? Okay, everybody mark their calendars then. Um, Counselor Danahue.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski.
I.
Uh, Counselor Santos.
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Item number ten, referral to the Planning Board for zoning bylaw change for three forty-three Albion Street. This um is another of the perfunctory items that we just simply refer to Planning Board. Um, so I'll start with a motion and then we'll do discussion if necessary. Do I have a motion to refer three forty-three Albion Street zoning bylaw change to the Planning Board?
So moved. Seconded.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on this? No, if there is none, um, we'll take a vote to refer this item to the Planning Board. Counselor Danahue.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Santos.
I.
Counselor Dombrowski.
I.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, looks like we have a stray license request, a twenty-twenty-two common victular license renewal for Kipos roast beef. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
So moved by Counselors um Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any any discussion on the twenty-twenty convictular license for Kipos roast beef? Counselor Dombrowski.
Uh, can I just ask, is it not about this particular like license, but can we do licenses on a two-year cycle? So that we did like half, you know, odd years, half and even years. Is is that allowable, Mr. Mullen, like under?
I don't think so. There, the statutes call for um different um various periods of licensing. And I think that we're talking here about an annual license.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I, when I was looking at this, I thought to myself, can we maybe do this every every two years somehow, yeah, but if we can. So be it, okay. So, sorry, sorry.
I know, he had.
Good try. Okay, so we have a a motion that's consecutive. Um, we can do a roll call vote if there's no more discussion on the Kipos roast beef twenty-twenty-two license. Counselor Danahue.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Santos.
I.
Counselor Dombrowski.
I.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we already did item twelve earlier today. Um, any announcements? Counselor Dombrowski.
I just wanted to again remind everyone that um the vote for the Voke is tomorrow at the junior uh uh the Galvin Junior High to some, um, eleven AM to six PM only, so there are different hours that we're accustomed to. But it's the exact same polling location, um, and we ultimately have to get to amongst the twelve communities of fifty, above fifty percent um, in order for that to move forward. And I do think it's a really um unique opportunity, having um the support of the SBA financially and otherwise to really um uh expand an opportunity that I think for a a population that I think is underserved. And those are, you know, a lot of students who can go into the trades, um, and so I think it's a great opportunity going forward um, to help a lot of um a lot of our students for decades, you know, decades to come. So I encourage everyone, please go out and vote. Because um again, it's the aggregate of the twelve communities. So every single vote in every single community makes a difference. Thank you.
Counselor Santos.
Um, Counselor Dombrowski stole my thunder. I just wanted to also um remind folks about the Voke and remind them that this passed overwhelmingly at town meeting. Um, Wakefield really rallied behind uh this school, so um, nothing, I can't add anything to what Ed said. Just please take, if you have the time, just shoot down there and vote for it. Thank you.
And the times are eleven to six, right? Okay, so it's a little different than um, standard elections. Counselor Chines.
Uh, so first of all, uh, ditto to uh Counselor Dombrowski and Counselor Santos. I I encourage people to get out and vote for the Voke uh project. Uh, you know, I will add, we we've talked about sort of shortages in terms of people going into the trades, which is something that um, is really critical, something that we're struggling with as a town in some ways. Um, I'll say, also say, putting on my my professional hat, had as someone who works in healthcare, uh, a lot of uh vocational education is tied to healthcare fields such as medical assistants and, you know, other types of positions where there also are are huge shortages. And so, you know, as we think about the jobs that we need to fill in the economy of the future, uh, vocational education really does just hit the mark in a lot of those areas, which is a another reason why uh, I think it's critical for us to have expanded capacity uh at the school. Uh, a few other things that I wanted to highlight, uh, one is a uh a show that's currently uh in place at the Albion Cultural Exchange, uh, Bring the Good Show, and you know, I think is where we're going through winter and an Omicron surge. Um, you know, and it's it's a tough time for a lot of folks, um, you know, certainly emotionally and and in a lot of other areas. Uh, it it's kind of nice to have something positive to to look forward to, like a Bring the Good Show. Uh, and so uh encourage people to check that out. Uh, that's running on Friday nights uh from five to seven thirty through February twenty-fifth. Uh, obviously, uh, mask requirements are in place there. Uh, you know, they have protocols in place to make sure that that everything is safe. But uh definitely check it out if you're interested. Um, while we haven't had a ton of snow yet, uh, anticipating that at some point we will get some snow, I wanted to again put a call out for the Wakefield Snow Angels Program, uh, which is a a program run uh through the Youth Council uh to pair up uh teenage volunteers uh with seniors that need help clearing uh their their walkways and sidewalks and and steps uh in the snow. Uh, they're continuing to look for both uh youth volunteers as well as seniors uh who are interested in getting some help. Um, if you are interested uh in either volunteering or or getting some support from the program, you can reach out either to the Youth Council uh or to the Senior Center. Uh, and then finally, just wanted to mention uh that I'll be having office hours uh this Wednesday from five thirty to seven uh over at the library. So hope uh hope to see folks there uh again uh in masks. And that's what I got.
Great, thanks. Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just to echo what uh Counselor Dombrowski started with, election tomorrow, eleven to six. I do just want to say um that this is a first step in the process. And so there's gonna be a lot more conversations about the road and sidewalks and and aspects of the building. And I just wanted to let particularly, you know, there's twelve communities who are taking this vote tomorrow, but I think we feel extra strongly because it's in our community. And so I just wanted to um reiterate, you know, that there's gonna be a lot more conversations with the architects and kind of the school administration and just for everyone to consider that as they go and vote. This is not, um, these are not final uh drawings and renderings thus far. It's a longer process. Um, also, just uh just wanted to, a couple of of highlights from our great website. I'm just so it's just so great, the work that Jen McDonald has done. Um, applications, we mentioned earlier, applications to serve on town boards are due February eleventh, so look to see if there's a position on a town board that you would like to volunteer for. We could not run without our volunteers, um, so please look into that. Um, our winter newsletter was just released today. Thank you, Steve. That is such a great aspect of um our town. So please go check out our winter newsletter. Um, and also on our website, two two other things that I learned. Um, ARPA funding, we will be having conversations about ARPA funding. Um, but there's a way to submit suggestions online, so I encourage you, if you haven't already, to submit suggestions of um that ARPA funding. Um, we'd love to hear from you. Steve, in particular, would love to hear from everyone, but we all would. Um, and lastly, I think Steve's gonna talk about the Booster Clinic. Can I leave that to you?
Sure, the Booster Clinic is gonna be the ninth at the uh Herd School.
Um, great. Thank you. I was just digging for that. Good, perfect.
And twelve plus, so it's it's twelve years old and older on, yeah, on the uh February ninth. And you can sign up again on our website, more information, and you can um reserve a spot on our website. So I do, I do, you know, we are still in the midst of this Omicron. We didn't have a presentation today, but I do want to. Um, the last thing I'm gonna say is I've just been so impressed by the businesses who all, um, I I'm guessing, working with Aaron and Steve kind of had signs up and thank you to, you know, members of our community who are trying to just keep others, neighbors safe and wearing their mask until we get to the other side of this. So something else we can all do is if you haven't gotten your vaccination and haven't gotten booster, um, please do so. But that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Danny. Uh, you're on mute.
Sorry. I was also gonna mention the Vaccine Clinic. Um, I had my booster uh at the Melrose Wakefield. Um, the last one, the first booster clinic, and it went seamlessly. It was quick. And so I encourage everybody to get boosted, who's not boosted. And also, um, full support of the Vocational School, so please vote eleven to six tomorrow. Um, that it is not an override, is not a debt exclusion. So I think that that's important, that it is not going to be, um, we're not gonna see an increase in our tax bills as a result of this. So, um, please go out and vote and um and great point, Counselor Butt, about that this is the first step in the process and this isn't about the road and where we want the road and where what we want it to be in our community. But I think that um, I've talked to Mr. Mayo, who shared um some of the benefits and the collaboration with the Vocational School in our town. And it's a great benefit to have it in our community, so fully supportive of it.
Great. Um, I echo what everybody here has said about tomorrow, so see you all there voting tomorrow. The only thing I have to add, um, we had a tragic pedestrian death last week in Wakefield. Um, right at the end of of my street, it really, you know, it's so hard when it's an area that you and and your kids and and family cross, you know, almost every day. Um, um, even before that, we were having a lot of conversations about how to improve sidewalks and crosswalks. Um, and this really just gives it new urgency. Um, there's a grassroots organization in town called the Safe Streets Working Group, um, which meets on Wednesday and um is actively uh working with the town and and others to really try to identify how we can make our streets safer for everyone. So, um, I that information, I hope will be in the newspaper tomorrow. Um, it's also on my website, Julie, for Wakefield. Um, also Wednesday night at the same time is um, the light department's holding a strategic planning meeting. So if people have real interest in kind of long-term strategy um, for the our utility, which in in Wakefield is really important because they provide both natural gas as well as electricity. I do encourage kind of energy wants or anybody who's interested in that to to sit in on that meeting. Um, I think it'll be very interesting. That is all I have. Um, Steve, do you have anything?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. I I want to give a shout out to um Coach Perry Pappas at Wakefield High School. Um, he co- coaches the cross-country team and he was named um, by the U.S. Track and Field Cross Country Association as the Massachusetts High School Coach of the Year. So great job by by Perry Pappas, great guy. Um, I've seen him running his uh cross-country team on Christmas Eve at around noon time, so I thought that was okay, but I I said, you're a little, no, no, they wanted to, he told me, but uh great job. Um, uh, for for you trivia wonks, the um, the the Scholarship Foundation um, has their virtual trivia um event on fifth, Saturday, February fifth. Um, there are still slots available. You can go on the TSF website. Um, it's all virtual. So uh not a bad way to spend a a Saturday night. I know that um my boys and I uh have a team, so we'll see how we do. And um finally, a a great shout out to um uh, Wakefield resident Kelly Condon and the Tufts PA School of two thousand twenty-two that graduated uh this weekend. I think we mentioned uh getting people into these uh positions and uh a tough uh ride for these people that um entered uh PA school in um the the in January of two thousand twenty. Probably didn't expect that it would be the way it was, but um they did graduate it and about thirty new PAs will be out there. Once they meet the boards, which will really help with healthcare. And that's it. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Sherry or Tom, anything to add?
Nothing, thank you.
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay. Um, item fourteen matters, any matters not anticipated for the agenda? Um, and so we move on to um adjourning until our ne- regular next scheduled meeting, which is Monday, um, February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two at seven PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
They'll moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion? Moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion? No, so um Counselor Danahue.
Yes.
Counsel Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Santos.
I.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Give minutes, Madam Chair. I.
Um, Counseler Butt.
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right. Yeah, we did pretty well. Okay, everybody, have a have a wonderful couple of weeks. Um, we will meet again on Valentine's Day.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Everyone.